All right, it's five o'clock and now welcome to the Action School Committee meeting, January 11th, 2024. We'll begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Ross, do we have adjustments to the agenda?
We do. I'd like to add to six-two. Right now, the agenda has listed to six-one. Six-two will be, accept the FY-23 audit. So just vote to accept, and Paula has copies of that. And just an explanation for now that we've moved into the budget season, the school committee meetings won't have progress monitoring or celebration of learning. We usually do that before and after budget season. But because we want to have plenty of time for the budget, we just basically keep our school committee meetings in the next couple of months just to business. And then, of course, if something comes up, we'll add it to the agenda. But tonight's school committee meeting shouldn't be very long because there's not a lot on there, and then we'll transition right into a budget meeting. For the budget meeting, I only need Paula to stay with me as far as administrators go, so the rest of you are off the hook on that. And of course, Warren Finance is here to join us. So we'll rearrange. We'll take a quick break, rearrange, and go right into budget, okay?
Okay.
All right.
All right. Do we have any comments from the public? Oh, I see a hand up. Okay.
I was wondering if anyone has looked into the changes to make the pickup safer? Because I know it was mentioned last year, I think in the April or May meeting, May meeting that I was here. And again, at the November meeting, it was brought up. So technically, it's been like eight months since the concern was brought up. And nothing has really changed with the pickup. And now with the snowbanks in the roads, it's even more dangerous. So I'm just curious if anything has been addressed or looked at or...
Amanda and Mary are part of the Long Range Planning Committee. We met just today on that. So when we get to that part of the agenda, that's what they're going to focus on.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And the second thing is, in November, I brought up that there is no job description for the athletic director. It has been two months. Can I get a copy of the job description?
Mm-hmm.
Is that if it's been made? And I want to make sure what happened this basketball season does not happen again with sports and acting. And has anything been discussed or any guidelines put in place so that doesn't happen again?
I can answer the job description. I'd be happy to give it to you when it's done.
Okay.
So I don't have anything to give you tonight.
Okay.
As far as anything for the future...
Policy committee was working on that job description?
No, that wouldn't be policy. That would be...
We used to back in the day.
Yeah.
I used to take them all when I was on policy.
Is it more of an HR thing where it's a...
Really, it really is. I guess, you know, for job descriptions and things like that, we have the generic ones for teachers. And we had a list of duties, as Liz mentioned, for athletic director. We really don't have a job description.
And the board approved them all, remember?
So you could approve it.
I don't know how you hold someone accountable to their job if they don't have a job description, so...
As far as your second part, I'm sorry, was about how do we not go down that road again?
If you... Yeah, and have you discussed that? Like, I'm just...
I haven't, and I've been the interim athletic director to make sure that those things don't occur because I'm running it.
Right, yes.
And so for basketball, I only committed to doing that for the winter sports.
Right.
And then I'm going to hand the torch off to Sam Singleton, who is the interim for spring sports. So that'll occur as soon as basketball ends. And I plan on working closely with her to make sure, because she's interim, so if she makes a decision, I generally don't hover as a manager. But in this case, I will because I want to make sure she gets the support she needs. And then we'll post the position, athletic administrator. It could be activities and athletic director. We could look at a lot of things. Post that in the spring, and the budget supports it. And the job description should be there by then.
Yeah.
To hire, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? All right, here are none. We'll move on to number two or number three, and I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
A second. Mary and Amanda?
Oh, CJ actually said it.
Mary and CJ, okay. All in favor? And we'll move on to number four. Do any of you have any questions about the reports from the administrative reports? I would just like to know, was today the day of the teacher swap?
Yeah.
How did that, how did that go today?
Yeah, I was going to bring it up. Go ahead.
Let me just say before we let Dave tell us how we like being in first grade. The energy around that whole swap from the staff was amazingly positive. And, you know, there was a little nervousness from some people. You're out of your comfort zone. You're doing something different. But they met during last week's early release day PD and this week's early release PD so that they could plan and get ready for this. And it was amazing. The kids loved it. We got some great pictures and video, which will be part of an assembly, I believe, at some point. But it was so nice to watch, you know, and to see the excitement.
Where did Dave go?
Where did you go, Dave?
First grade. I was in first grade.
First grade?
A little different than eighth graders.
Which class?
Eighth graders just before lunch. I was with first graders teaching science after lunch. Yeah, yeah. It was, I mean, again, I've always taught junior high science. So, I mean, obviously, it is a big, big difference. And, you know, it's kind of the uniqueness of Acton School anyway, is that we're a pre-K through eight school, and that's kind of a rare bird. There's not many of those left anywhere, you know? So to have that, you know, to be able to do that, you know, it's a, it's a unique experience, no matter what. But it was, it was fun. I'm glad I teach junior high. You know, but I, to do it like that, it was enjoyable, you know? You get different reactions. I mean, you, it's tough to get sometimes. You're really, you try hard to get a reaction or, you know, some enthusiasm sometimes out of an eighth grader. And then I'd show the simplest thing. I came down with some, some science props, of course. Man, you show the simplest thing to the first grader, and it was like the, it was just a gasp. I mean, the sounds were, it was amazing. Like, didn't, didn't take much to please them, so. Probably a good thing because Sherry Smith was the ed tech in there. She was with me. And she's the real true test. If, you know, if I pulled it off, I kept them engaged. I don't know how much I taught them, but I did.
And did you get any, any feedback from the, from your swapper?
Yeah, she, she had a little different situation where I was, I had to do quite a bit of direct instruction, where she gave great subplans. They're in the middle of a project in my, my eighth graders, you know? So we, you know, she said it went, it went well. She was a little intimidated. I mean, most, most every kid in the class was way taller than, than she is as a teacher. So, you know, she used to the littles. It's kind of the opposite effect, you know? And, but she said she was amazed at how, you know, what they can do, you know? And what the, you know, what they, you know, they were researching things, and she's just looking at that whole, that, that opposite level, you know? So it was kind of flip-flop. And then they conned her at the end to come down and sit in the back of the first grade class with me and watch me teach the first grader. So they all came down to the class and watched, watched, you know, they couldn't handle it. They had to watch me teaching, teaching the first graders. So I had quite an audience.
Well, I think that's, that was a great idea. And it's, it's great to see what the other end of the building is doing sometimes. I think, you know, we talk, we talk about what we do at each end of the building, but I think to see it firsthand is, is fun. And that's just one example. How many swaps did we have?
It was all of the teachers in regular ed classrooms and the specialists. So we had...
Everybody did the swap.
We had Ally Hobbs doing gym with kindergarten today. Which was an amazing thing to see because they played the floor's lava, and that is a fun game for them, so. So everybody swapped.
Good.
So it was, it went really well.
Sandra taught art. She's a natural. Great job.
Dinosaurs.
Dinosaurs.
Good.
Well, thanks to Patty and Rachel and Becky, who did some filming and some photography in each room. We'll put together a really fun slideshow that we'll share with the kids at Assembly and you guys as well.
Great. And what did you do?
I created everything and I will do a swap with Heather LeVie, who wasn't here today.
Good.
What did you do, Mr. Ross?
I did Mr. Ross's job.
Nobody wanted to swap with you.
All right. Any other questions about the, any of the administrative reports?
I do. I think it was John who said there were new students. I was wondering what grades were impacted and how many new students in December?
Yes, I'm going to do it off the top of my head right now. We had three new kids come in, and two of them are in first grade and one's in kindergarten.
Yep.
Oh, young.
We had, trying to think of our other new student who came in in December.
Not in yet. Not in yet. It's coming.
Oh.
Seventh grade.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, good, Liz. Yeah, we got, we got a person who we're, we just need to get the enrollment straight note.
Do you ever get that? I mean, that seems like a lot for mid-year.
It is, it is a little different. You know, we're used to having the, you know, we have our numbers all set for school opening in a week before. In comes a bunch of people we didn't know about.
Like that, we understand in August, yeah.
Yeah, these, these year, these mid-year transitions are a little bit different for us.
Seems like a lot.
Two, the first grader. Together, they're brothers.
Oh.
Right.
I heard, I heard all about them.
We got some new kids.
Yeah, super exciting.
Okay, then we'll have your report, Mr. Ross.
I was going to mention the teacher swap. That's been taking care of what a great day it was for us. And also, Jennifer, I don't think anybody actually thanked you publicly. I want to thank you for that because you, you arranged for the teacher swap, which isn't easy. Who's going to, and she said it was completely from the hat.
You did the hat? Really?
And it happened to be that the middle school...
That worked out.
It worked out great, yeah. And it was a direct swap. Originally, we kind of had a different pyramid-shaped situation. But direct swap just means you got to work with one person. The prep and planning was more linear, so Jennifer, thank you for that. Reminder that the first two inclement weather days, which we haven't had yet, but we will, are going to be remote. Just a reminder to the public that if we, so when we do cancel school for snow, it'll say a remote learning day. We'll do that twice, just as a heads up. And if, you know, it's, the holiday concert seems a long ago, but we haven't met since then because we had to change our schedule. But the holiday concert was fabulous. I just wanted to bring that back one more time, and I know some of you were there. It was cool. It was really cool. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who came. It was, again, every year I say it's probably the largest event, but I bet that is the, that was probably the largest event we'll have this year.
Now, was that a new, brand-new music teacher?
It was.
Out of college?
She's fantastic.
Yeah, she's, she's...
I think she's not...
I think she's been out for a year.
She's not right out of college, but it's her first teaching job.
It's her first teaching job. Thank you. Right, yeah, correct.
And she's definitely found her niche in life, believe me.
Yeah, she's so good.
She's, she's just a natural. She's just where she needs to be.
Now, does she play instruments? I'm just curious.
She does. She plays the guitar at the front door lots of times. Yeah, seriously. She'll be walking around.
And she sings, she sings the band?
Beautiful voice. She's got a nice voice, too, yeah.
Yeah. We did the National Anthem with what we have for a chorus at the basketball home, home game last night, last night? What's tonight? Thursday? Tuesday night? Tuesday night, some of the girls on the team, some of the cheerleaders, and then some other kids that aren't on either team. Must have been eight or nine of us that, you know, kind of got around the microphone. It wasn't even a microphone, but we were at center court and sang the National Anthem. It was cool. I had some people from out of town say that was really neat because middle schools usually don't do that. Yeah, it's kind of fun.
And she has a, a great connection with the kids, you know? She's got them right in the palm of her hand. For all the switching around that they did and all the changing that they did, back and forth on the risers and coming up and down, it was all organized. And when they were ready, she had them right there. It wasn't mass confusion, like it can be sometimes. It wasn't, it wasn't that way at all.
And Chad helped with everything.
She had...
Chad did sound.
Yep, Chad did. Yeah, Chad did sound. It was very good. Yeah, it was great.
And she seems like really energetic with the littler kids, but then she's also really cool, so like the older kids like her, too.
And that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on then to committee reports, and we'll start with the policy committee. And I think we have three that are just up for review and one that we did the first reading on last month that we'll be approving and adopting as a second meeting.
Yep. So the first three are just kind of going through and making the small updates that we've been making. We're getting to the end of the ones that haven't been reviewed for 10 years. And there's really nothing big for any of those.
They took out the words "microfilm" and "microteach." That's when you know.
Yes. We decided that we probably are not going to have any records on microfilm in the building, so.
Yeah, that was a good one.
I thought that was probably fine to take out.
And move some of the, move some of the things from educational records to school administration instead of just special ed director? Move some of those over to...
Right, because it wasn't clear that the policy was based on IEP students. It was student records. And IEP is a student record, but there's a lot of student records. Attendance is one.
Right.
So we can change it to administrator, and that would include special ed.
Yeah.
And some fees were increased.
Yes.
Very little, but increased. That's all. I look very good.
So then I will look for a motion to approve IHBAB, Student Educational Records, JRA, Notification of FERPA Rights, and KBA, Public Rights to Know, Freedom of Access, as being reviewed.
So moved.
A second?
Been moved and seconded. All in favor? Okay. And then last month, we had the first reading on JICIA, Procedure Addressing Reports of Dangerous Students. And tonight, we have the second reading on that one, which would mean we'll be adopting that one for a final, for a final adoption. Motion on that, by CJ?
I'll second that.
And seconded by Jeanette? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, so moved. Long Range Planning Committee?
We met tonight. We were discussing the pickup slash car problem out in the road. So one of the solutions, we were thinking, can we get the DOT to widen the road? I know they own sides of the road. I don't know how much further. One option would be to see if the selectmen thinks, because it's a town, it's not a town road, but it is, because I think we maintain it. Don't we maintain it?
We do, we do maintenance.
Huh?
We plow it.
We plow?
Yeah.
Okay. So in a way, the town has to be involved, and I was wondering if Dan, you would like to look into that?
Yes, very much, so.
I mean, I don't know if the DOT has, I mean, they must, you know, if they see this is a dangerous situation, they need to widen the road. What the process is, because we just came up with this is a good idea. Maybe the DOT can take care of our problem because it's a road problem.
Well, the other part of it was, we wondered if you wanted to come down at pickup and see when the first...
Do you have the time?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've been to pick out because I, I pick out applications.
We need data.
Yeah, to see that, like, the first car that has to sit in the road, like, figure out what time and...
And then back.
And how many cars and how long there's cars in the road.
Every day, every day it differs.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see, though, how long it takes.
You can work directly with me on that. And the reason is, I do parent pickup, and because of where my new office is, I can see the front. I can see everybody coming in, which is good. But I can't see over the hill by pre-K to know what's going on in the road. First person who's here for a 2:30 pickup is generally here at 1:30 to 1:35. Then it starts filling in slowly, but I don't know when the first, I don't know at what time is the first car knocking our driveway on the road.
On Milton Mills Road.
Love to know that.
That's a good trick.
Because when I go out, it's already out on the road.
Yeah.
And I can see it over my shoulder, but I don't know when that first car showed up.
But you know, I've been there and watched this.
Yeah.
Now, and I've seen some pretty clever people that have used their brains on how to do this. They come down, and where this first little bridge is, they pull way over on the side of the road. And those that can't get over the bridge, they wait before the bridge and pull over the side of the road.
You can do that when there's no big snowbanks. I mean, we have this problem.
I know. Well, you can move the snow. That's minor, rather than move the whole road.
No, no, I'm saying widen the road. Pushing the snowbanks back better.
Yeah, putting the snow back, but now coming down the road.
It's only four cars that are, there's probably four cars before the bridge, and then everyone has to be after the bridge. If I, I, there are people that will sit on the bridge, which I think is very dangerous.
That's what I mean.
And that happens all the time.
That's...
Because if another car is coming the other way, you have nowhere to go. I personally don't do that. If I, if I'm the next car to go on the bridge, I wait back by the car.
You don't go on the bridge.
Yes.
And people can see me, and I'm not on the bridge. But there are people that just sit on, I'm like...
That's the problem. They gotta...
And there are people flying by, and like, we have the light on, and I literally almost put my hand over the window the other day because Massachusetts police guy, he's gone, and I'm like...
Blame mask.
And coming down the road.
Yeah.
You can move over a little bit.
And the cop is never there. The cop has been there. I've seen him once out of every day that I've been at pickup.
He's got other things to do. That's not...
Bunch in the morning, bunch in the morning.
That's something else. We talked about that, too, about whether he could be around at pickup time.
Can we ask him 2:15, hang out there?
But it's common sense.
The problem with, because we, we've had conversations with the sheriff's department about, you know, we've asked for them, like, why are they specifically in the town? I don't know if you know, but in December, we paid for extra coverage because we wanted to see, the select board has talked about some options. I'm making sure we get more coverage for situations like that, but sometimes because they are our county, they may be scheduled for us, but if they get a call, they're, they're gone.
Right.
So, so it's hard to schedule and say, can you be here for this time? Because they, they can't always...
So we don't have a police officer right now?
We do. We do, but the problem is we're supposed to get so many hours.
We used to share somebody with the sheriff. Now we don't have that?
We do. We do, but we're paying for...
But he'll, he'll have to leave?
If they get something, because they're, they're...
Okay.
They get a call.
There's an emergency. There's an emergency.
They have to leave. So, so that, that's one of the issues that the board has been, and come some of the previous meetings, we've talked about looking at other options. One of the reasons we talked about buying more coverage, so we're, last month, and we're going to see what money we have to kind of continue that additional coverage. And we're hoping at the end of maybe next this year to come up with a solution so that we can have coverage and we know where the officer is, that they can stay. So that's something that's going to be more of a long-term. I think in regards to the planning, like, it's, love the idea with looking into the roads. I think that would be a longer-term solution. Because relying on the snowbanks, there's going to be people who just, no matter how much you inform and try to get them to say this is not safe, they're going to, people are just going to ignore that and do it anyways. So I think looking into the road...
I mean, I was even thinking, you know, Milton Mills, if they could even do a turning lane there. And then people who would come from the fairgrounds up would say, no, let me go down Sanborn around and get in the turning lane.
That's not going to work.
If they can, if they can only widen the road in one, one lane length.
But people are going to want to get here. They're not going to want to go up and around the road. I don't...
One thing, because I did bring this up to the select board before I brought it up here, because I asked them if they had any suggested recommendations. And they had said, because we do have an engineer, if that's something that we wanted to look at, to see if something like that or an alternative solution. Because as you folks know, we've been doing some projects where we've used the engineer to kind of come up with just like what is possible, what is possible. That's an option that they said the school could utilize the town's engineer.
Well, I think it's the state DOT, though.
But how long does this go on?
Because it's a state road.
How long does this, how long does this, wherever it begins and ends, how long is it? A half hour and it's all over with?
It's about a half hour.
And it's all over?
2:15 to 2:45.
Or is it 15 minutes?
I mean, how much do we...
Twenty minutes to a half hour.
Once we start moving people...
Well, they gotta wait a minute.
Jeanette, once we start, once Patty and I are in place and we're moving people, I can tell you it's a 10-minute deal. Because we're back in before the second bell rings.
Right.
But how long people are waiting out there is unknown.
Yeah, but tell them that comes so soon.
That's what we...
People are at 1:30. It's cold. They can't help it.
I mean, this is a common sense thing.
I know.
Well, not, not really. This is not so common.
Yeah. That might be good, Dan, though, to have the engineer help do some research and connect with John.
You're just changing your topic, right?
I'm definitely, I'm, like I, I mentioned, the board is open to the idea of an engineer. I am definitely open, like, as someone who picks and drops my knees off, I've seen it, and my number concerns if, heaven forbid, there is something that happens. You know, we, we don't want, I know that the number one priority for the school is the students and the safety of the families. And I know that we don't want to increase the chance of something happening, so.
And then when they get... Then when they get through here...
Great, thank you.
I've clocked them going 60 miles an hour by my house.
What about, what about the possibility?
Do you have a radar gun?
Yep, I got them.
Of buying the purses.
I do. I tend, like they have...
Some of them have flashing lights, but kind of like some of them have a flashing light on their car that sits at the end of, like, the middle school parking lot.
Could stop them out there and could tell them when they could go, you know?
That's right.
You can't cross the bridge yet.
That's right. That's right.
I'll tell you when you can cross the bridge. That would be another...
I think it's a solution, but like, just my personal opinion. I know, obviously, everyone, again, I think a long range, because that's taking into account, again, people listening, common sense. I mean, if that was the case, we wouldn't have this problem because they wouldn't be stopping in the bridge, but as we've heard people do it. So I think even with that, you're going to have people who just are not going to care or who are visiting or just cutting through, and they're not going to be aware.
Even a sign that says, do not stop on bridge. It sounds like common sense, but you just said that it's not common.
Well, you know what they say. You know what they say, the flower of common sense doesn't grow when everybody's a garden.
Yeah, I'm definitely open to working. I know the select board would be open to looking at possibly, so definitely...
I'll be your point of contact because I got a pretty good sense of where this might go.
Thank you. Thanks.
Boy, haven't had a long discussion about anything for a long time.
Anything else from the long term? Or is that mainly your point of...
That was... That was the focus today. Nope.
No, don't tell me that. Nope. I'm thinking, I feel we should pave the parking lot.
Where the buses are.
Where the buses are.
Oh, yeah.
Enough of this mud during, you know, I think the paving of that area. As a long-range planning, I think that's something we could put on our list.
Yep, we did talk about that.
Because then we could use it as parking when we have big events and stuff.
Who's plowing it now?
We do.
Andy?
No.
Knox Autobody.
Knox Autobody.
Oh, okay. So you're putting it on the long-range list?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move on then to number six, new business. I'll look at John for an IT department update.
Yeah, I'll just be brief. I just wanted to let everybody know that we're in the process of developing a plan for what the IT department might look like in the future. And that'll be a plan that I'll bring to the board to be adopted, and it'll also have budget ramifications. So I believe that's Article Six, and we'll do that later, like we do special ed last. I'll make sure later in the budget process, that'll give me a little more time to pull a plan together and then support that plan financially. But really, I guess the way I've been talking about these two people is, there are things that are happening right now that you can't see or hear. So in the walls, there's cabling. In the air, there's internet. There's wireless. And when those things are humming along perfectly, you don't know. It's just like walking into the room and hitting a light switch. When the lights come on, well, great. And when you don't turn on the lights and, oh, you hit the switch and the lights don't come on, you notice it. So when we lose some of those systems, it's noticeable, but most of the time, things are running great. And we have the battery backup on the computers, so when the generator kicks on, there's a nanosecond. You can, unless if you know the building, you won't know that you lost power and we're on generator. We don't lose the internet. We don't lose our connectivity because the battery backups are working with the generator. That all seems like a great, everything's kind of in great shape. We have a consultant working with us to help develop the plan. There are, we might be a little, we may have more servers than we need. We've had the same person doing the job for 25 years, so when you do that, you kind of collect some things, and he did a great job. I mean, the engineering of the technology department is in great shape. Where I'm going is, I don't know that we need a, an IT director. It's not a full-time thing if we can get some of this automated. So there's a certain amount of service that requires systems to work, and they generally work fine most of the time. And when they don't, you can have, you can contract with a company to do that. I can have things repaired on my computer while I'm here and somebody's in India doing it. Really, you can take over a screen. So there's options there that I'll be more specific about in the future. The piece that we need to think about is break fix. So I'm the interim IT director now, too, so I've learned a ton. YouTube's been awesome. And today, I had to work on a Xerox copier, and I had no idea that the rollers themselves can be replaced. Patty came down, like, hey, what are you doing? So she's wearing her white sweater and loves to get ink on it, so she gave me a hand. And we're digging through the Xeroxes and through the YouTube and through a little bit of information I had, we got that thing up and running in 10 minutes. The hands, it's like trying to get a haircut over the internet. You can't. You need to have people onboard for things that break. A young lady's computer, the screws were coming out of the back of her computer. I met with her. We did it together. It was kind of fun. I told her she should be an engineer. She found the right screws, and we put it back together. Off you go. Another, two printers went down today, and I... Another printer, two printers went down today, and I had to give two computers out, and that was it. And I was here to do it, because I don't have a classroom schedule, and I'm happy to do that until we have something better. My thinking is, you still always need somebody in the building. So right now, the current thinking is, maybe it's sort of like a stipended position as a technology liaison or coordinator in the building, somebody might have some interest. And if the printer isn't working and that person's teaching, they could do it on their prep period. So they'd give up that prep because they're getting paid for stipend to fix, the break fix stuff. The break fix stuff, you have no idea during, when it's going to happen, right? So you just need somebody around. Right now, I can do that. There are also times of the year where we need banks of computers ready to go for assessments for Patty, get everything refreshed for summer school, get everything refreshed for the beginning of school. That could be contracted as well. Maybe it's the stipended person, maybe it's not. But I think the days of having an administrator in IT are probably behind us moving forward. And a lot of the systems where we're heading with cloud-based IT technology really removes that person from the system. So that's kind of where we're heading. I'll give it to you in writing, and I will bring the consultant I'm working with in with me when we do that, because he can get into the nitty-gritty that I can't.
Well, what about, you know, how we had the food service director?
Yeah.
Why couldn't we share something with Sanford, like that, IT?
Right. I, I think we, we may be able to, and that's something we could talk about for like a help desk support or something like that. But the break fix, the analogy, you can't get a haircut on the internet, is you really need somebody in the building. So I, the problem with that is, I couldn't say, I need you here one day a week. Well, nothing will happen that one day, I guarantee it. Nothing will break. And it'll break on Wednesday, and then we're here Tuesday, and it's going to be next Wednesday we get it fixed. So that needs to be, we need to find some talent in-house. So we'll take a look at what that is. Dave?
And I, honestly, I don't know if we need a tech, an IT guy, or we don't need an IT guy as far as a director. But what I do know, in the classroom, in the practical application of using the computers, I mean, you know, today, during the switch, you know, it didn't matter where we were in the building, almost everybody was using the computer, you know? I was using the computer in, with the first graders that I was working with today. I know my eighth grade counterpart, where she was using the computer. We use them, they are used constantly. They are a tool as, you know, used as much as, you know, anything that you have in your, in your toolbox. So one of the, you know, one of the key things is, you know, when we, when there is an issue with them, it, it can cause a major disruption to the educational process, because, whether you agree or disagree, we rely on them so much. You know how much we rely on technology in our lives. So it, whatever happens, it has to be some sort of nimble response to that. Because, not that I can't, you know, make something, I mean, I can think on my feet and do just about anything. That's not the point. Is it the best thing? No. The best thing was what I had planned to do, you know, with, with the technology. You know, all of our, you know, like, if suddenly we realize, oh my gosh, we're doing a bunch of research, and our, our, some of our blocks are not working, we got to be nimble and take care of that, because the kids are getting information and this and that. Or if, again, you get, you've got some computers that are, the computers that are glitching, and we're right in the middle of something important. A big one is testing, all, all of standardized testing, everything is on the computers. I mean, we've had many times when everything sounds like great from the state, oh, this is going to work great. And now we've got three or four classes in the room that were right in the middle of tests, trying to get testing going, and it isn't happening. And you've got to have somebody to get you, get you rolling. I mean, I could go on and on and show you, I mean, no matter what it is, and I, I don't have the answer. But the answer is, somebody decent has got to be ready to go, or it is a very disruptive scenario every time.
Especially if everything is on, everything is on.
And I'm thinking too about, you know, when we introduced a new program, like when we brought in Brightspace, having somebody here to work with the staff themselves, being able to have somebody working directly with the software, when you have new software or something coming in, to have somebody that has, that has that, that can work directly with, with the staff, as well as being able to troubleshoot other things during the year.
Well, what is Jennifer Goodwin's Library and Media Specialist?
There's a number of things that I can do.
She's also.
There's also a number of things that I can't do. But believe me, I have already been looking into classes, so that, that can be my, my next move of, of making sure that I take the classes needed that help act in school.
Well, I would appreciate that.
We haven't talked nitty-gritty with the consultant, but Dave brings up a good point, and I did address that you need somebody in the building. Question is, how often? If you didn't, if you had a stipended position, something about certain things would probably need to go away. And I'd say Brightspace might be something we would have to look at, because it needs to be maintained. Now, as Dave says, if you have somebody here more often than not, then obviously Brightspace would stay, because you have a person who can manage that system. But if we were down to a, a technology plan that had a stipended person, or a break fix person to take care of the main things, I would highly recommend that Brightspace not be part of that technology plan, and they would use Infinite Campus. But if we went with somebody that's here more often than not, then I'd say absolutely stay with Brightspace, because you have this person to support it. So those are all the things you need to think about.
Isn't Brightspace the new program that you guys just got?
Right, it's a learning management system, yes.
And you get rid of that, you know, you just implemented that?
Well, you'd have to look at parents, there's a lot of things to that. Are you using it right now?
I go on it, I haven't been on it recently. I was actually on it last more, last year more, because the teachers were on it a lot more last year, I felt like.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I definitely, I, I don't know. I mean, you, you either need to encourage them to use it, and parents sort of have like reminders, like, hey, like, you can look at this, like, there's now the sixth graders or whatever from fifth grade, they, like, do they even know that they can, the parents can go on there? I don't even know. But you spent all this time to get this, and then it seems like now, apparently there's no IT guy anymore, which I did not know. It just seems like there's so much technology that I don't think getting rid of somebody that should be in charge of technology, like, everything is technology. And like, you don't have problems, there's got to be something every day, there's got to be, there's got to be.
No, we're saying, a director position versus an IT guy.
Yeah.
No, don't worry about that.
Is it the stipend?
I, I think we all kind of agree, we need, we need a body in the building to take care of stuff, but it's just the level.
Right. Whatever you decide, please make, do an oath in front of the camera, that we're not, you know, that it, in this age of technology where we, I mean, it is your right, it's your right hand, that we're not going to take steps back in what we can, what we can provide to the kids, and what we can do in the classroom. You know, and be nimble, like I said, that's been, you know, this stuff, stuff happens. All right, the ability to use them comes with being nimble as far as dealing with glitches, because there's glitches. Technology is going to be glitchy, but being able to deal with it, you know, kind of seamlessly, and it's just a little bump versus a whole major disruption in, in, you know, your, your instruction. I mean, I just don't want to go backwards. I always, I'm always henny-penny with this stuff when I hear, you know, some of this. I don't, how could you, in good conscience, go backwards? So whatever you guys decide, that's just my true sense.
I, I don't, I don't see us at all as going backwards. I see us as looking for different ways that we can improve on our technology for the school, and for the teachers, and for the staff. And kind of spread it out a little bit, and I certainly, I'm very much in-house person for technology. In-house person for technology, definitely we need somebody in the house that's able to jump in and fix whatever's going on. Some of the things that can be fixed remotely, I don't think, I think that in-house person, that hands-on person doesn't necessarily have to be able to do, know how to do. But the remote person, a person that's doing something remotely can do stuff from remote that doesn't necessarily have to be a, you know, fix a screw or a, can't switch off a computer within the building, or help a teacher in the building or whatever. So I think there are, there are two, we're looking at two different things here. We're looking at something that's in-house, that's hands-on, that's there, that's there for staff to use, that's there for kids to use. And we're looking for something that's, that's big, that's in the bigger picture, that's up there in the clouds, that can be done from some other places. It's two, it's two different things. We have now, is, you know, what we've been using now is doing both things, so.
When I say use Sanford, I don't know how they have it set up, if there's one person per school, or, and then, I don't know. But the director part, they're the ones who get the budget going, and, you know, we need someone who can be budget-y and take care of, I don't know, maybe that person who we end up hiring or whatever. But that could be a, you know, a stipended job from a head guy that's in Sanford. I'm just trying to see if we could borrow the knowledge that someone down there, I don't know how many people they have, maybe they have five people. But, you know, I don't, I felt Mike was like all alone, I don't know. He kind of operated his own independent thing here, and maybe it'd be better to have a broader.
Most bigger systems will have an IT director in central office, and they'll have an ed tech in each building that reports to them, and the help ticket system works that way, but we don't really have, we don't have scales, we don't need that. But it's a great thing for us to think about, because if you do a stipended position for break fix, you don't have the professional development person for Brightspace. That doesn't happen with a stipended person who can do it in between their classes. If you hire an ed tech level person to be your break fix person, they're around 40 hours a week or 30 hours a week. But that kind of, that level person isn't going to be a professional developer of IT kind of information like Brightspace, so you haven't, you're still not there. So you've got to kind of think, you know, if you, if you bring in a person full-time, then you want him to become a professional developer, and something like Brightspace would stay. If we didn't do that, I'd recommend something, something like, and I'm not saying Brightspace, but something alike, that would need to be, go away and pick up something simpler like IC, which I would support. If we're bringing in a full-time person, I wouldn't support that, I'd say Brightspace is tacked on to you because we're paying for you. See what I mean? But an ed tech coming in doing break fix 40 hours a week, we don't have that much break fix, so you need to be a professional developer too. And at that ed tech level, I think it's hard to find somebody that has that knowledge. You're getting into more like an administrator. We'll wrestle with all this, because we, we're going to get through June okay, but we have to figure out what it looks like July 1.
Okay. And is that it on IT department update?
Yes, and we added 6-2.
And then we added 6-2, the acceptance of the FY '22 audit.
'23.
Uh, '23, yeah.
Paula, do you have anything to say about the drafts, and where we're at, or what they need to do? It's just really accepting the final audit.
Just accepting the final audit. A bit of a process, but we got there. Do you have any questions on it? But it went pretty smooth. We didn't have any findings, or?
They didn't find anything wrong?
Nope.
No.
That's good.
Usually you get some recommendations when you pay an auditor, we didn't get any this year.
No.
They did not scare me away again.
We also got that at midnight, last night or something. So I think they're working pretty hard. Like tax, accountants and taxes, they don't sleep.
Now, will next year's audit be with who the town uses?
Well, they usually reach out to us for a commitment in February, so we haven't talked about that.
The town ended up going with the same, because they couldn't get it on.
With who?
With the same one.
The town has, they wanted to leave.
Oh, so now.
They weren't able to.
No changes were ever made?
Nope.
Okay, good to know.
That's right.
After all that discussion.
Well, I think, I think the town's finding too, and I think Dan will, will back me up on this, that there just are not, there are not auditing firms around that want to take on these jobs anymore. There are very, very few, they're few and far between, and when they, when you put out a, try to get, try to get some, you know.
They don't, I don't think the town got any, when they went out for, they didn't get any back.
And they got, and they had a couple if they did, and they didn't, and they didn't want to take them after all.
They're either like, really expensive, or just weren't really looking to do anything.
They're all very shorthanded.
So, yeah.
No.
So, actually, Ian, you have me up in there. So then I will look for a motion to accept our.
I just don't know if we ever did that before. Did we ever have to vote on it?
I don't think we did.
Here's what came up, I was, I don't know that you ever voted on it, but.
I don't know that we ever voted on it.
Last night, I was bailing out my new sump pump that doesn't work so hot, because of the way I installed it. So in the middle of that, Jen Rue was texting me, and I, and she asked if we had accepted the audit yet. And I said, the audit's still draft, and then, of course, midnight of that night, Paula gets the final audit. And I said, if I can, I can add it to the agenda, and we can do the acceptance of the, the numbers, and I think it came from Jen. So I, so I asked her, have you accepted your audit? And the answer is, you, you accepted, they accepted theirs last night, so we're in a position to do it.
We have to?
Okay.
It's a recommendation on my part, you don't have to, I mean, it was just something that came up, yeah.
Well, how much does it cost to do?
To accept it?
No, you can accept it, and I'm just saying, what's the bill? What's the bill?
Didn't you see the bill come across yet? You didn't see the bill?
Paula, do you know roughly what this costs?
No, I don't have a computer, I don't have my computer.
Right, it's around $5,000.
Oh.
Well, I will look for a motion to accept the budget for fiscal year 2023.
The audit.
The audit.
The audit, sorry.
So moved?
Moved by CJ.
Second?
Seconded by Amanda. Any further discussion? All of us in favor? So moved.
I do think in the past, Kim used to just put a department report saying, the audit's done, and here it is. There was never really anything.
Well, I looked back, yeah.
But that's okay.
That's fine.
I don't think we ever did this before, yeah.
Maybe the town does it differently than we've done it.
Can I go back on a couple of reports here?
Uh-oh.
Out of order?
Out of order, right. Not about the curtains this time.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute.
She wants to do old business.
We're on old business, so how old is it?
How old is it? It's just something from Patty Damaris and the grant that she got.
Oh, Patty.
I am, I am writing a new grant for literacy, literacy program to provide PD for teachers, to provide materials for students. And it's $11,863 that the state is offering us. I succeed in having to answer the questions and submit it by the beginning of February.
Oh, good.
So I'm happy to do that, because I'm starting to chart the scores for the diagnostic now, and it's looking really good.
And the other thing was Paula received a new grant from?
Sharon, yeah.
Sharon?
Yeah.
No.
The homeless.
Oh, okay, oh, signed by whatever, okay. Preventing student homelessness for $44.79.
Something like that, yeah, a little more than $4,000.
I'm done.
So much for your old business, Jeanette?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you for reaching out and taking the time to do those, you know. I know applying for those grants isn't always an easy task.
It's not my favorite.
It's, it's, requires a lot of work and a lot of looking up and a lot of research and information, and it's, it's very much appreciated that you take the time to do that, and.
I've created a lot of good friends at the state, and so I have a good, a good support system. And I have questions.
That's good.
They called her back, which is awesome.
They do. All right then, I think that's the end of our regular business school committee meeting. And we're going to transition now into our budget meeting. We're going to move some tables around and bring in the Warrant and Finance Committee, and go into our budget meeting.
Okay, so we'll just take a quick recess, maybe five minutes?
Yep.